Could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Notice this meeting was given in advance thereof by publishing one time in Keith County News and posting to the city administration building as shown by the certificate of posting notice. Notice this meeting was simultaneously given to the president and all members of the council. Availability of the agenda was communicated in the advance notice and the notice of present council this meeting. All proceedings here at the council will be taken while this convening meeting is open to the attendance of the public. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Open Meetings Act posted at the southeast corner of the council chambers. Any person wishing to address the council may do so by standing or recognized. Please go to the podium. Please sign the sign-in sheet located on the podium to state your name and the organization interest or person you represent before you begin speaking. Thank you. Roll call.
Block.
Here.
You hear.
Here.
Polk, you hear.
Crafty.
Here.
Block.
Here.
Right, uh, on the consent agenda, we have claims. We also have the minutes of the regular meeting held June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by council block and a second by council interior to approve consent agenda. If there's no discussion, the council please vote.
Oh, that's big. That's big.
I'm aging, I have to see it.
Yeah.
Five, yeah?
Motion carried. Uh, we have no public hearing tonight under public forum. We have people's service update.
Mr. President, I do not see the people's service staff in the audience. However, the written report is in the package.
The, uh, any of the council members have any?
I'm not aware of any major issues or...
Good. We have no discussion on that. Uh, moving on to the report. The C. Perth Frazier. Nothing. A few. Okay, recommendations, recommendations of departments, boards, and committees under administration fireworks ban.
Mr. President, we are revisiting the ban on fireworks. Had a conversation with Fire Chief Dale Zimmerman, uh, less than an hour ago. Uh, Chief Zimmerman has been in contact with other chiefs in the county. Um, he feels that moisture levels are sufficient above where they've been in past years. The precipitation outlook for the remainder of the week looks good and is open to, um, the rescinding of the ban and allowance of fireworks for unfortunate line.
Okay. So, any, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on the committee?
Me? You want me to come up here?
Yes, right there, please. And sign in the sign-in sheet.
Okay. I can't do two things at once, so you got very...
Right there. We have a new format now as a legislature. We, we don't have to sign the sign-in sheet coming into the meeting, but wish to speak to council, we have five options.
Okay, so my name is Travis Howard. I'm the president of the La La Supox Derby Board up there on Illinois, Illinois. I'm sure you guys all know the Supox Derby and I know Mike is very familiar with us. Um, we have run a fireworks stand for Bolino fireworks for the last at least five years of what I have records with me. Uh, I think it's gone back a little bit further than that. Um, the short and sweet of it is since we've teamed up with Bolino, uh, that has been one of our major sources of income for, for supporting the track. Um, for those of you that know, the city owns that property, but we maintain it. We take care of all the buildings. We take care of the grass. We, you know, any maintenance issues, if something breaks or something, uh, we, we take care of that. Um, for the last five years, and I have to speak if you guys are interested in seeing them, uh, we've sold fireworks. The average for the last five years, the revenue for, for us has been seventeen thousand dollars.
A year?
A year. That our track has earned, um, selling fireworks. Like I said, that money goes back into the track as far as maintenance, upkeep thing. Uh, we've had the track repaved. We've had buildings built. We're looking at expanding buildings up there for more storage for us. Uh, also during the fireworks stand, we have the families. So every year, we send families to Akron, Ohio. This year, we have seven kids going to the world championship in Akron, Ohio in middle of July. Uh, both families are invited to go out to the fireworks stand and earn money to help go towards their trip, to help pay for their, their travel expenses and hotel costs. So, so a lot of that money goes right back into those families' pockets that volunteer at our fireworks stand and, and help pay for their trip to Akron, Ohio. Um, we talked to our vendors today and asked if you guys had lifted, lifted the ban tonight? If they would be able to get us, uh, fireworks and products for us to sell? And they said, yes, if you lift the ban, then we will get you your fireworks stand and all the products out there. And so we'll just need you guys to set it up. So the burden falls on us. We are the labor. Uh, Bolino supplies the... If you're familiar with where we've done it, we've done it out by Walmart, just east of Walmart, that empty vacant lot that Wilkins Development owns. Um, they set up a couple of containers back to back and then we, and then a big truck goes out there with fireworks and, and we stock out the big truck into those containers and sell out of containers. Um, I just want to thank the council. Uh, I've talked to Austin quite a bit this year. Uh, I knew that with the drought coming up, that there was a possibility that we might see a, a ban this year. So it's been very nice to talk to Austin and he's taking his personal time to talk to me about fireworks and help us prepare for this. Um, I talked to him today. He said, why don't you just come in and, and let us know, you know, how your organization uses it? So, um, just letting you guys know, this is how we use it. This is how we've been using it. Um, one of my main topics for talking with Austin this year is a couple of years ago, we went from ten days of selling fireworks to five days. And, and the council had asked all the vendors at that time if that would be a problem, and we all said, no, go ahead and do it. Um, the last couple of years, what has happened is we haven't had a weekend to sell fireworks home, so we've seen about a twenty percent drop in sales. So, one of the reasons I talked to Austin this year is it would be nice to extend the selling so that we had a full weekend to sell. Um, so that that might be seven days instead of five some days. It's, it just depends on where Fourth of July falls. But that's regardless of another time here nor there. But, uh, that's, that's all I have to share. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Good to hear that you still...
Yeah, so we would be able to set up and we could be set up over there.
That way she's going to be very busy.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
My name is Ryan. I had a couple of questions for Austin. On the fireworks deal, for year-round, you can go in, say Walmart, buy packets that have some of the same stuff that all of these organizations choose to sell. Were they informed of the ban or is that not... I mean, out of those...
I believe there's a different license requirement for that constitution.
So were all of the organizations given the option of selling that classification alone, not just flat out ban from sale?
Can you elaborate on what you're talking about?
So if you go to Walmart right now, you can buy a package of the little drop box and little fountains and all the stuff they got in. You can buy those year-round. Well, you can also buy them in their trailer. If they weren't given the option to sell them, but Walmart is.
The question was going to be, um, once I had the question, but it was never brought up that way.
That's just the majority of my question there. There's places where you can get them and other people were told they couldn't do it. So, that's my concern with what's happened to the, all the nonprofit organizations that are choosing to... That are going to be hurting this year, losing what they've lost. That's all I got.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Right.
Yeah. Fine.
I'm Raylene Limer. Uh, I have a question about how many days one can shoot them. Where I live, it sounds like a bomb's going off. Different days on end. I don't care that outside my window and need a going. And I just wondered what the rules were. Always going to do it for ten days, five days? I mean, I love... I pair it both.
I believe the ordinance is June thirtieth through midnight, July fourth. Cheers.
Cheers.
It's good to see you, Mr. Black. I haven't chatted for a while.
Well, you know what I want. How the older people, like your mother has, will work on you. You know what? I got my bill for insurance. I had this little house on Fifth Street, paid on sixty-five for it. Forty-five hundred dollars for my insurance. Got it today. I'm not rich. I'm on... Austin Milton, but I'm on a stern eye.
Sure.
But, while I'm here, I might well remember the speech. You have all these, uh, low-income places. And where I came from, before we...
Stay on the agenda.
Last...
We, we need to stick to the agenda item.
Oh, okay.
If, if you would like to get on and, you know, under, under public forum, but we need to stay...
Well, I don't, I don't...
No.
I don't use tons of meetings, so I get it.
Okay. That's easy.
Then, I might do that.
All right, just let, uh, Jay know, uh, the first, and she'll get you on the agenda for a specific item if you like.
When?
Uh, well, our next meeting is...
Next meeting is July eighth, November tenth. Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council regarding fireworks? Any questions, motions from the council?
I would move to allow the discharge of fireworks from June thirty, twenty twenty-five to July fourth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion by councilman Block and a second by councilman Polk to allow, uh, the sale and discharge of fireworks. If there's no further discussion, could council please vote?
Five, yeah?
Motion carried. Let your vendors know.
I'm ready, Jeff.
I see we have the commissioner. Corey Crandall, did you have anything you would want to say on that issue?
Okay, uh, my name is Corey Crandall, C-O-R-E-Y, Crandall, C-R-A-N-D-A-L-L. Uh, I am here tonight on behalf of the Keith County Commissioners. I am the chairperson. I have been, uh, directed to, uh, follow basically suit of what the, your guys' discussion would be tonight. So that way, uh, and I have the authority to be able to lift the fireworks ban in Keith County. And, uh, in my direction, we will lift the fire, the fireworks ban in Keith County, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Corey agrees. As we've discussed, the public needs to be aware of the extreme wildland fire danger in areas of the fuel...
Oh, yes. Uh, you know, as you pointed out, that you, uh, visited with, uh, fire chiefs and, uh, I received those same phone calls. There is a lot of fuel out there. Uh, we do appreciate the hard work that our fire chiefs have done. Uh, you know, all of this discussion is based off of, of, uh, their recommendations, and I respect that. Uh, you know, it's just one of those things that some, sometimes it's a, you know, sometimes it's a tough call when they, when they reach that. And, uh, so therefore, I do, uh, expect the public to be diligent on how they shoot their fireworks, especially in county areas outside of the set limits. There's a lot of fields that will be drying up. And, uh, to be, uh, very cautious on how you discharge a fire.
I think it'd be good to coordinate next year with the county on this also because if it would be marginal, you could do similar to what we did this year where the governor had a ban and lifted it, then if you had a ban on it, it makes a lot more sense if it's going to be dry to shoot them off in the city versus out in the rural area. Yeah. We have, we have homes, garden hoses, people watching close, whereas some of them up in rural area or field, whoever set them off probably would be gone pretty fast.
Yeah, that is true.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your share. Coming up.
All right. Moving on, under community development, K-CAD office update. Mary Wilson.
Hello, everyone. Hey. Hey, Mary Wilson. Director for Keith County Area Development. It's good to be here. I haven't been for a while. Um, Molly and Zootree and the board held on the board until I was absent for a little while, so very thankful, um, for that. So, thank you to everybody. I'm here for a quarterly update. The same one is in the packet. I'm going to print it out to make sure everybody has, um, a copy. Jeff challenged me to stick to a hundred words or less. I don't think that's enough, but we'll fly through, hit some of the highlights if you guys have any questions. Uh, don't hesitate to let me know. Uh, the big focus in our office is our small business assistance. Molly continues to be a rock star, um, in that avenue. She currently has thirty-eight active clients. Uh, the Grow Nebraska grant has closed and will not open again. Uh, but Molly is looking at clients and connecting them to other grant resources, other resources to help them with their small business struggle. We're helping them write business plans, update business plans, things of that nature. So extremely proud of the work that she's been there. We had a very successful Keith County Big Give to help raise funds for First Impressions projects in Jackson, Cool, and Ovalolet as well as with the Western Trails Creative District. Um, hopefully, all of you have been able to go around, uh, participate in the Sculpture Walk across Nebraska. Molly did such a good job along with the Creative District, um, Sculpture Committee to put together this lawn, uh, program. And we are fundraising for more projects in the Western Trails Creative District. Molly has received thirty thousand from the Keith County Foundation Fund, thirty thousand from the Robert Trannick Charitable Trust, as well as we received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Nebraska Arts Council, um, to support that five-year plan for the Creative District. Gentry Welsh in our office has done a phenomenal job on our social media presence and with our e-news, our flow desk. Uh, if you guys are not subscribed, I encourage you to do so. And if you have any questions, please do. We do a great job of sending out monthly updates as well as posting updates on our social media. So, um, it's great to keep everyone informed. Um, Gentry is also working on a project to take new stock photos for our office. Um, so we're taking recommendations outside the obvious, right? Downtown, Front Street, things of that nature. Any, any hidden gems that you think that, um, we should capture to have stock photos that we're sharing with the visitor committee? Um, she's going to be out of the house for the next couple of months. Shoot us an email if you have any ideas.
We cleaned up the waste water stream.
Hey. You know that. Uh, in regards to business and industry recruitment, Raising and Gavey Project, the resource is progressing. They do have an office now in town, and I've been in a close conversation with Sharon and her team on how to best support them as that project moves forward. Kevin Black and I have a meeting set for tomorrow, um, to cover some discussion items that have been on our list for quite a while. Um, we want to touch base about Gavey and the North Business Park. Um, Taffson infrastructure ballot resolution, um, that failed this last year. Just want to touch base with him. Um, so he can continue conversations with the council. And then also having a literary discussion or just things that Kevin and I are going to cover. Just to have a discussion on where does K-CAD fit into that conversation? What does that look like? And share my ideas with him if he has the K-CAD VA part. Just want everybody to know that. Uh, Black Hills Project in the North Business Park is progressing, which is wonderful. We want to see that progress. We are having a Y First Roundtable discussion to talk about IHUB development for Ovalolet. And that is in partnership with former Senator Justin Lane. He and his team are looking to put together a plan for that. And I believe city representatives received an invite to that, uh, discussion on the first. In regards to Lake McConaughey, uh, we did receive eighteen million dollars to support road development out of Lake McConaughey, which is getting a lot of gas. Thank you. Uh, shall remain nameless to, to provide that opportunity for us. Uh, but the game of parks and some local representatives will be having a meeting to discuss what, uh, next steps look like to make sure that those sponsors are, uh, rest up to use. Our revolving loan fund, uh, those who are not familiar with our revolving loan fund, we provide gap financing to small businesses throughout Keith County. Uh, we currently monitor loans and we have about fifty thousand dollars available to loan to small businesses in Keith County. All of our loans that are current, so if there's any small business looking for gap financing for a project, please send them our way. Hopefully, we can offer them, um, in a local lending institution. Housing development, uh, we continue to monitor more first housing loans, um, to instruct for first housing in Ovalolet, Taffson, Cool, and then there are extra zoning jurisdictions. We currently have two projects that are being built. Two that are developed or delayed just from a, um, capacity standpoint, and we have two more applications that are in progress. And we'll also be seeing a statewide spotlight on that program. Uh, the Department of Economic Development, uh, a great article that we just approved today. We'll get that out highlighting the success of that program. Um, let's see. The middle school project that isn't ever being done, the roof has been touched, and I shared that update with Kevin. They took the other forty-seven page document showing the improvements they made on, on the roof of the middle school. And they can play how many doctors, um, have been taken away from that property, and so progress is being... We have yet to see any requests to reimburse the loan to get that. What can we do? We'll share that with the city, uh, for requirements of that agreement for LV eight forty. Uh, we'll be doing budgeting work soon at our office. And just a note of interest, the current D E D director, uh, K.P. Bayless resigned today. His resignation is effective July eighteen. So the state will be looking for a new director. Any questions?
Mary, I know you've, you've, uh, touched on land banking.
Yeah.
And I know we've, Ed and I have had some preliminary discussions on, on the need, the, the need for a critical mass to do a program. And if you would like to get on the development district's agenda, if they move somewhere, you'd have to go back there and getting support from that board to do a land banking.
Yeah, absolutely. It's all about what makes sense for us, right?
I know McCook has tried it, but it... We need, we need, we need a bigger area because there's, it'd have to be a region. Mary, you still need...
Reduction or cutbacks or eliminations of funds at the federal or state level that impact your projects?
Nothing that impacts our projects. All of our funds are from a housing perspective. Um, that's where we see our, our function, D E D. Those are in, in our council's terms and conditions. Nothing, no economic development program that we utilize that's impacted.
Good. Any other questions for Mary?
If something comes up, as always, I encourage anyone, whether it's council or people in the audience, to please contact our office. But if you need, happy to discuss anything.
Thanks, Mary, again. Thanks, Mary. All right, uh, moving on, under planning and zoning, we have nuisance, basement, I declared nuisance. And I was instructed by, uh, our city attorneys that I need to, uh, read the record at this time. Bear with me.
Give me time to sign in.
Yeah. Uh, we have property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero zero two, P I D zero zero five, zero zero two three zero zero. Sixteen, West Fifth Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy. We have property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero zero three, P I D zero zero five, zero zero two five zero zero. Sixty-nine, West Fourth Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-one. Property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero zero five, P I D zero zero five, zero zero one three zero zero. Seven oh eight, West Fifth Street, Resolution two, twenty-two seventy-two. Property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero zero seven, P I D zero zero five, zero zero one, two zero zero. Four oh one six, West F Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-three. We have twenty twenty-five, O G A zero zero eight, P I D zero zero five, zero zero one, eight zero zero. Seven eleven, West Fourth Street, uh, Resolution twenty-two seventy-four. We have twenty twenty-five, O G A zero one three, P I D zero zero five, zero zero nine nine zero zero. Eight oh seven, West Third Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-five. We have property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero one four, P I D zero zero five, zero one one, six zero zero. Eight twenty, West Third Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-six. We have property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero one six, P I D zero zero five, zero zero seven, eight zero zero. Six eighteen, West Fourth Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven. Property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero one nine, P I D zero zero five, zero one, two seven, zero zero. Seven eighteen, West Third Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-eight. Property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero two one, P I D zero zero five, zero one one, eight zero zero. Eight nineteen, West Second Street, Resolution twenty-two seventy-nine. Property twenty twenty-five, O G A zero two three, P I D zero zero five, zero one, three three zero zero. Two twelve, West East Street, Resolution... Two twelve, West East Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero two four, P I D zero zero five, zero one, three five zero zero. Six fourteen, West Third Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-one. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero two five, P I D zero zero five, zero one, three six zero zero. Six twenty, West Third Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-two. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero two six, P I D zero zero five, zero one, one one zero one. Nine oh nine, West Second Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-three. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero two seven, P I D zero zero five, zero one, one one zero three. Nine eleven, West Second Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-four. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero two nine, P I D zero zero five, zero two zero one zero zero. Eight fourteen, West Second Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-five. Property twenty twenty-five O G A zero three three, P I D zero zero five oh two, one one zero zero. One fourteen, West High Street, Resolution twenty-two eighty-six. Mr. Dunn, you need some water.
Yeah.
I'm gonna pass out my card, it's tough act to follow whenever you're coming behind the amazing Mary. I don't know how she does it, but she does. You have to keep her as long, keep her as long as you can. So tonight, I'm gonna present our signings under the section that we reviewed for Ogallala this year. Uh I took Ogallala on as one of my communities as the new executive director for West Central. Uh my name is Edward Dunn, E D W A R D, D U N N for the record. I am the executive director for West Central Nebraska Development District and have been so for the past nine months. I've had the opportunity to meet several of you during that nine months, but this is my first opportunity to speak in front of you. It is a privilege in and of all. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Ogallala in this capacity. Um I provided all you with my card. We've added a fancy Q R thing on the back. You know how to run your phone and that thing will take you directly to our website. Uh and then talk a little bit about what West Central is really quickly before we get into, into nuisance. I've branded, you know, as, as I came on, took the charge of tackling our mission, vision, and values and redoing them. So what you see before you is our new mission and our new vision. And I'm not gonna read it verbatim. You can read it up there. Uh we serve eighteen counties and fifty-eight incorporated communities. Um since our inception, we have brought sixty-six million dollars, over sixty-six million dollars to our region, to those eighteen counties. Uh we're one of eight development districts in the state. Um and we're, we're very proud to be one of the development districts in the state. And we're very proud to serve this district of West Central. Southwest Nebraska holds a special place in my heart. I was born, well, accidentally born in Washington State, but that's not Mother's fault. She shouldn't have traveled when I was so close. But, but I, I, I do say born and raised in the state of Nebraska. I've also provided some cards on the table. If anyone would like to take one from the public, then feel free to do so. Um this year, we, we surveyed a hundred and thirty-five properties. Uh thirty-five courtesy letters were sent, eleven properties cleared voluntarily after receiving their courtesy letter. Seven properties were granted an extension. Uh we like to grant those extensions if they make progress, if they contact us and say, hey, I have a plan. Um we're, we wanna work with the property owners and not against the property owners. Um and then seventeen properties to declare nuisance. So if you look at that, really tonight, you're looking at seventeen properties out of a hundred and thirty-five. You should be proud of that. Ogallala should be proud. That's a really good. I know those numbers haven't been that way in the past, but it's evident the program is working. And with that, we will get on to the meat of it. Thank you, Chairman Kraski, you already, you wanna reread those or? Are you sure? Mister, Mister.
Everybody, everybody.
I think he's good.
Okay. First property, and I, as I understand it, Jane told me you'll review all of these.
Unless, unless someone would want to call one specific property out.
Absolutely. So stop me if one of these needs to be called out. Uh twenty twenty-five O G A zero zero two is the first property. The first photo, and all of these, uh as we go on, is identification photo. We have an unlicensed vehicle. There's an issue in the, the sticker that is no longer the color. Twenty twenty, that's the only nuisance on that. I can slow down if you'd like. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero zero three, again, just an identifier photo here. Um what we have is some discarded personal property. That's the wood. This could be easily rectified if they neatly stack. No issues with that at all. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero zero five, identifier photo here, we have an unlicensed trailer. If you zoom up on that license, there you go. Um I would also like to note, um I know most of you are aware of the, the program, but we do not go on personal property. All the photos that you see are taken from what we call a windshield assessment. Uh that means they're taken from within a vehicle on either the street or an alley. Public rights away owner. And my staff are strictly instructed, do not leave your vehicle. If you can't see it from the windshield, doubling this. Um again, here, just discarded tree trunks, firewood probably, uh broken fence. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero zero seven, identifier photo. So doing a remodel here, looks like some discarded carpet. Then they stacked some bush, tree limbs, et cetera. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero zero eight, fire photo. We have just like a personal property and home goods here. Looks like a freezer to me of some sort. And then some cabin tree there as well, um as well as an unlicensed TV. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero one three, identifier photo here, um discarded pallets. Remnants of some chicken fence in there. Discarded personal property, pallets. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero one four, fire photo here. Now this looks like the remnants of an old fence. There's pickets there that you can see that are fairly weathered. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero one six, identifier photo, unlicensed trailer. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero one nine. By the way, this is, I really like the social. I'm usually working off my laptop, which is a bad, bad number. Uh unlicensed vehicle, uh there's your zoom up there, I'll go back even though you see like the big cruiser on your left. Discarded tire, hard to see there, but there is a tire in that brush. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two one, then the fire photo. License trailers, or maybe a discarded speedo there. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two three, then the fire photo. Discarded concrete, and that's still those tree limbs. Again, more tree limbs and discarded wood. Remnants of, of some sort of a project there. There's more stacked tree limbs that have not been used in a few years, but that will run out of time. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two four. View of the vehicle, and it goes up here, it's obviously an unlicensed vehicle. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two five, then the fire photo. Discarded file cabinets here. Maybe some A or some stack there, more file cabinet. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two six, then the fire photo. What's the violation here is the barrel. Standing water is the perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. I know we're just now getting some rain, but the mosquitoes are coming, I promise you. If you haven't been out for the fall, they're already there. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two seven, then the fire photo here. Discarded washing machine and dryer, you can see it in the next photo here. There it is. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero two nine. We have what appears to be a sink on the porch there. There's probably a cast iron sink worth some money, honestly. Uh and a tire there. Uh no evidence of secured structure. So this, this invites all kinds of additional kind of, of pest. Kids can get in and out of that trap and everything. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero three three, nine oh one here. Well, we do realize this is a business. Um there's just several discarded things that can be cleaned up on this property. All vehicles within the street, none of, none of which is that. Do I need to go back to any property? Does anybody want to review that again? Um there he went, you wanna single out stuff on the children's.
I'd like to go back to the zero twenty-five real for those trying to keep notes there. Just to be clear, all of these have been notified either in return, uh phone call back to the office or did not attempt to.
Absolutely. That is correct.
And how much time did they have from receiving the notice to today?
Yeah, good question. Um sounds like I need to get back on the agenda to do a nuisance program overview. So I'll, I'll give you a holler for that, and we'll give you the, we'll give you the footnote version here. Counselor number two here. Uh so yes, what happens is they receive an initial courtesy letter. Uh that courtesy letter, letter is roughly thirty days, can take, you know, a couple of days in there. Um after they receive that courtesy letter, we do another review. If they haven't contacted us and their progress has been made, but they receive a, a letter with the intent to declare, which gives them an additional thirty days. And then contact the city clerk with the agenda items, um and that's where we're at this evening. So give or take roughly sixty-ish days.
Any like ample time, uh we've seen them.
Uh twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, that's what we stopped at, so follow them. Discard and follow them.
Looks like a lot of the stuff is easily reminiscent.
Absolutely. Yeah, most of this, most of this is, is what I would also probably just be borderline with. Um but we, we don't have the luxury. We, we have the lux, we don't have the luxury because we're gonna follow the city through. We appreciate. I know a lot of the things to attribute on the thing, but tribute is not part of your city thing.
And the regular year on the high street.
What's that?
So that is zero zero three.
Three?
Yeah.
You got me clicking. Sorry if I caused someone a seizure. Lost it, so. Uh zero zero three, um this is just the work, just the tender.
That I think very much. I understand they had time.
We'll have to do a stack it. I'll have to do a stack it, and there's other properties that can, I mean, just not, not trying to.
No.
Green on it here.
That's the one that just stood out to me. Everything else, I think, makes sense, the barrel, file cabinet. And I think before you were uh on, you had this discussion on um kind of the same thing, same concerns too. And one of the things that we talked about in the past is, let's say there's half of them. Uh if it was unstacked, then it seems less, it's minor even more. Uh even a few pieces, it's a bit more minor, well, now let's go the opposite direction. So at one point, do you think it's too much that's unstacked? And because of the identification, number of pieces of wood, uh that's kind of why we've always kind of kept it this way. If it's unstacked, unmaintained, uh that it gets a lot of.
Well, leaving it unstacked like that too just creates a, a good habitat for roaming, uh which I guess we have posses there.
I mean, that makes sense. We gotta draw the move, we gotta draw the line somewhere. I'm thankful to see that they have more than enough answers on.
Well, I mean, even, even if you choose to declare, tonight, they're still gonna have until the next meeting, so almost thirty days.
Great question.
We don't have to say thirty days, just say, into the next week. Sometimes we get in trouble with that. Then the meeting, that thirty days after your meeting. Thirty days.
Easy fix, you know.
Yeah, most of these are easy fixes, and like I said, it's a testament to the, to the program. Um and like I said, we're very honored and privileged to, to assist the city. I know you guys have full time uh with, with, with Mr. Scott, you know, doing, Mr. Troxel, David Troxel doing the, the complaint calls. Uh we're, we're area driven. Uh this is what we hired us to do, is review this section. Uh we review this section in detail. Uh it's just one person looking at it, two of my staff, it's now mandatory that two staff review it. Um that way, there's more than two eyes on it, I may have missed something. So we always go two by two on these and, and uh, you know, spoken with Mr. Wilk, Wilk has linked about this program and we're already developing some things for, for the future that hopefully will streamline this process just today.
We have used West Central on some one-off properties also, because that way we know that the procedures have been followed, the ties have been done, and we have a third party. So it's kind of specifically deeper uh guard damage forms in the event.
A lot of it is, we try to push the community, if, if there is an issue and they can't follow up within a thirty-six day, just call the office. Uh they're very flexible, we've had some over the years that have been, you know, a couple of months, even in the wintertime where you're dealing with them. As we were usually very willing to work with them, there's our health issues with a few people that we've worked with um all the time. So it's just that communicate back with the city in the middle, um you know, but if this runs off.
And we're, we're, we try to be empathic, we know life happens. Um you know, that's why we, we do get plenty of due process. We, we also follow state statute, it's time to follow state statute. And we, we do our, our best to stick to, to the city, carry on one and ten percent.
Well, we've rounded up into eighteen areas, there's, we have a number, we should try to keep a full one hundred and fifty.
We're, we're trying to stay at about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five parcels uh per section. Um and I know this is something Mr. Wilk and I have talked about, maybe revisiting those lines uh in the future. So there, there's some opportunity there. I, I know we're, we serve all sides of communities. Um a lot of our communities are villages, um and they have the luxury of only having three or four sections. And they can get three or four sections done, you know, in four years, years and beyond maintenance program, so.
But it's, it's encouraging to know that we have the ability to build it one off, so go out of that area if we need to first visit a project.
We can, we can visit about that, but. We have done that. Did it last year, actually.
As long as we don't abuse the.
Yeah. Yeah, because we, we wanna be, we wanna be area driven, certainly wanna be action driven. You got, you have the staff to be comfortable with, so. The comment question.
Program's working great, um we've seen a live lead. Where we don't, we don't have staff all the time with expertise as you guys be following statutes like this.
Yeah, I think it goes back to that slide there where, you know, we reviewed a hundred and thirty-five property in the section this year, seventeen are stable tonight. Um that's a true testament to the program and how well it's, it's, is this her, her second or is it her, her, her third?
We're probably in total of like three hundred properties reviewed.
Um I've tasked my staff with, with doing that, I, I think at the end of the year, similar to what Mary did with the quarterly report. I think at the end of the nuisance season, it would be important to see, you know, okay, we, where are we at this year, three, four? How many properties have we reviewed over those three years and declared in percentages? I'm a big numbers guy, so I've tasked my staff with doing that for our communities this year. At the end of the nuisance year, we'll give a recap with those. Kevin, how many properties have we had going in the, the bay?
We average about four or five a year. There's, some of them are of various sizes. I mean, we're still doing, we're, we mowed a lot of weeds this year, but that's not part of this.
No, we're not a weed.
We do, we're doing it from three to five a year, and playing that three to five a year on.
We're, we're also not addressing trees, because I do not have a certified arborist, but yes, I can see they're dead. I understand. But uh language is dead to be about the dying.
Which requires.
Last winter, we had, you know, there's bits and.
Got one.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting on the tree guy to come, I checked with Dr. Mr. Scott today to make sure I didn't need, need to pull any permits.
It's a tree, Dan.
The areas that we're looking at in the future years. We, last year, we budgeted twenty thousand in abating, which we do, we have fire properties, we shoot up a lot of them. Next year, look at the area I'm looking at, we'll probably budget about forty thousand.
Those abatments then are assessed to those properties.
Then we assess them back to the property, and if they don't pay the assessment, then we file a lien.
Good. Yeah, I haven't, I just, I don't know, Mr. Wilk.
And I just want to make sure I've got this process, so we declared a nuisance tonight, another letter will go out. So nothing off, to me, if they, if they fix the issue, it's just gonna go away, not for the benefit of the.
We, yeah, they'll come back. Sergeant, Mr. Chairman, yeah. So come back to you for, since you declared it a resolution, you have to also pass a resolution to the center.
Okay.
Um, and I stepped on your.
Nope, no, no, you're fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
They will. After this evening, tomorrow, kick the letters out. And, and other special note here is that, um, not just a property owner, but we send a, we send a certified letter to the property owner and the tenant. And I work with Jane on getting those, and so she's done fantastic job, also down this journey. Just trying to butter it up, much of that thing. And, and Mary stole my thunder, um, you know, none of us are dying. Um, we, we, we have, we've lost a great economic development director, M Casey, uh, he's, he's chosen the, the, so then he's got a resignation, so Director Bailey is gonna be there.
Questions, comments?
Thank you. Good job. Do you have a question?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Off the top of my head, that was better than the first.
There we go.
I would introduce resolution twenty-two seventy through twenty-two eighty-six and move for their adoption.
Resolutions twenty-two seventy through twenty-two eighty-six of the Clarification. Is there a second? Second. We have a resolution introduced by Councilman Block, and second by Councilman Torstee. No further discussion, could the council please vote?
I guess.
Resolutions twenty-two seventy through twenty-two eighty-six are adopted.
Right, uh, thank you, Ed. Uh, moving on, and we're planning the zoning creation of the Ogall High School Campus Historic Landmark District, ordinance fourteen forty-three. This president, this process, it began with the creation of the Historic Preservation Commission, through the, becoming a certified local government through the Historic Commission. Uh, we established the commission, uh, there was an application for three parcels. But the commission made a recommendation for an historic overlay, does not change the underlying land use, it's a historic overlay. The Historic Commission made a recommendation to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission took this up, and they have made a recommendation to the council. Uh, with, with both in, in groups giving unanimous approval for the, uh, historic district. Oh, on the auditorium, the old high school. This will be for a, how many units, Mary, forty-four unit? Uh, next then come adaptive reuse of that property.
The auditorium is not part of the project.
It is not part of the project, but we need a three parcel.
Yep. This does have a, an economic benefit for the project.
Correct, it allows them to access the historic preservation fund. Uh, the, the Ogall Middle School, high school, it's been divided up into two parcels, so each, each of those two parcels has its own access to funds upon the creation of this historic district. Over.
I would introduce ordinance fourteen forty-three and move to suspend the rules so that the ordinance may be read by title and moved, uh, for passage at this meeting.
Also, again, we have a motion by Councilman Laplin, or second by Councilman Holstein. Use ordinance fourteen forty-three and waive the three reasons. That's just me. Council, please vote. Do I have to read the title?
No, I read it after we vote, after we, yeah, after we vote for this.
This is just.
Declare we give suspending rule.
I guess.
Motion carried, suspended. An ordinance creating a Ogall High School Campus Historic Landmark District for property located between East A and East B Streets, and between East Fifth and East Seventh Streets, also known as the old Ogall Middle School and auditorium buildings. More particularly described as lots one and two, block twenty-two of Paxton Addition to Ogall, Keith County, Nebraska, and all of block nine Paxton Addition to Ogall, Keith County, Nebraska. All located in section eight township thirteen. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, section six, thank you. Township thirteen north, range thirty-eight west. Uh, PID zero five four zero zero two eight three zero and zero five four zero zero eight eight three zero. I'm going to adopt ordinance fourteen forty-three. Second.
With a motion by Councilman Holstein, and a second by Councilman Block to adopt ordinance fourteen forty-three. There is no further discussion, could the council please vote?
I guess.
Ordinance fourteen forty-three is adopted, thank you. All right, and moving on, under street, we have an agreement for engineering service, services for West Second Street Improvement Project.
Mr. President, this, uh, puts together the engineering oversight and project management, and puts together big, big documents for the project, and we'll be tearing up the street in front of us, broken up pretty bad, and then another street down the road. Or replacing curb, better driveway, by walk, up cross ten, West Second from A to Spruce, and East Second from C to D. This has been budgeted in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty year. The road to community development is always in construction.
All move to approve the M C, uh, Sheriff and Associates for Engineering Services for the West Second Street Improvement Project, West A to Spruce Street, and East Second Street Improvement Project, East D to East B Streets, and operation president of funding group.
Second. We have the motion by Councilman Laplin, and the second by Councilman Dupierre. There is no discussion, further discussion, council please vote.
I guess.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, this is the end. For the city attorney. For the city manager.
Mr. President, I will be leading tomorrow morning for the Nebraska City Management Association Meeting in Wayne. I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion, just as Jane touched, engaged in a lot of insight and robust discussion, finance conference last week. Like, hope I come home with exciting news. She came back with news from finance.
All right, uh, under board of health, we have not met, uh, the Ogall Community Hospital and Health Foundation, Inc., we are moving forward on our EMS barn. Working with the county and, uh, city attorney, uh, willing on structuring a lease or some type of agreement, how the state will be forward, I believe Kevin has been moving forward with. Uh, we should have some engineering documents by the, this week. We've been moving it from one location to the other. Didn't turn out to be a good deal, actually, we then took projects from, to give us some coffee. And, yeah, we, we should get, we'll probably reconvene after the fourth of July. Holiday. The original plan was to move it to the far east of the parcel, uh, next to the maintenance shed building back in there. But what we found, that it was a long distance utility, so we moved it to a.
Right.
Goes to North Spruce, for utilities. Basically on, but we also found out that, uh, we have to put higher suppression building, the, the public safety building, which is going to take our cost estimated like, you know, four, five more.
We believe there's fundraising, we'll answer data, we'll help pop test the cost of the project, but we need the, we need specs more than before. Uh, that's all I have.
Councilman Laplin.
Uh, library board had a date change on the board meetings, uh, this time around, so I wasn't able to make that one. And the Y M P A meeting is on Thursday.
All right, uh, Councilman Block.
The chamber, uh, I met with Lana, the president of the chamber after our last meeting, and talked to them about, talked to her about fire, taking of all fireworks. Uh, she was very interested, asked a lot of good questions, I forwarded them to Kevin, and Kevin sent a back an email. She met with her board last, or with the executive team last Thursday, and hopefully be, not, don't need to, the rest of it. Good. Sounds on the square, June twenty-seventh at six P M, that's Friday, Keith Perkins Band will be performing. The food is being supplied by the Ogall Girls Basketball. Ice cream coach is supplied by Big Mac Sports Club, and drinks by the hatch. That's all I have on the chamber, and I don't know what I could possibly add to the K H A report, other than thank Mary and her team for all the hard work they do on the security, that's a wonderful job. They are.
I always thought of Mary as your presentation, instead of my stage, we have to do that day.
Councilman Dupierre.
Uh, West Central Nebraska Delta District, I'm just, I'm standing there, it's not been a meeting since May.
We, we have no quorum in.
You know.
Uh, we have no quorum for our meeting in May, and our annual meeting is tomorrow. We typically meet on a Thursday, but we had a new release, we were some addition to the, which we always say, miss this time of year, with some vacation, that type of. We, we have a meeting tomorrow, listen, Councilman Dupierre, recap of our annual meeting, well, like, maybe I need to come in and give you a quarter.
That'd be nice.
So we can maybe, um, coordinate with the, with the council members report at the end of the month too, so.
Yeah, yeah, that way you're, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they work out from the chamber.
Yeah. I'd like to catch up with you. Um, West Central Nebraska Joint Housing Authority, uh, we have not met, uh, we'll have our next meeting in July seventh. Councilman Holstein. Keith Keith County Beautiful, they had cleaned up along I eighty-one P Ts, then in the middle of May, like, they team pulled bags of trash, well, and others that. Tried to couple four days after then, it's already filled up. Uh, the entire N S D day, it's been moved, the dates have been moved, so the location, it's now going to be September fifth, sixth, and seventh. This will be located here at the Keith County Department of Roads. Uh, the reason was, it wouldn't work out in rural, the logistics of renting a, a loader to load all the tires, and the cost and everything, it was just cheaper to say, we'll be here. Um, last, we're going to budget season, they did it for me, that they're gonna fill out a request from what they asked last year, because they weren't happy. Um, that's all I got for Keith Keith County Beautiful. And, so I'll hear what you guys want.
Thank you.
No further business.
I didn't receive a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
For motion by Councilman Block, second by Councilman Laplin, adjourn.
I guess.
Motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Jane.